Good afternoon. This board will come to order. Welcome to all of you in-house and out in the radio land, the television land. We're here for the ARPA meeting. There will be no discussion from the audience over boards. This is a workshop retreat meeting. I'm ready for the call, the meeting to order. I've done road call, this is what we need. We're ready for road call. That's still the usual.
I'm going to present them down front.
All right. Since this is a, we have, okay. Madam Clerk, Commissioner McGlaughlin needs your assistance. Oh, we got him. No, we didn't. Snap it on the table.
Well, note you present, it's not going.
Okay, he's present. I don't think there's nobody else in that seat. Madam Clerk, we have eight out of nine. Our, since this is a retreat meeting, our manager will present from the podium on the floor. Eyeball to eyeball, we get to see her smile.
All right, good evening. Tonight's workshop-style retreat was set in response to the board's desire to have more time to understand and discuss the remaining American Rescue Plan funds in light of the various requests initiated by board members and members in the community in regard to excess of available funds. So in terms of a roadmap for this session today, my plan is to spend less than five minutes recapping our current expenditures, then share an update on broadband while I'm down here at the podium. Then I'll turn it over to Tim Corley, and in less than five minutes, he's going to give you an update on the bids for the pending allocated projects, the courthouse projects and the community centers. And then the majority of the time for this workshop will be allowed for board discussion and direction thereafter. So, joined by the team, if I could just recognize who we have, Sam Croom is here as your Chief Financial Officer, and Susan Stokes along with Alex from the NCACC, Jennifer, our ARPA and Projects Coordinator, Austin, our ARPA Coordinator, and Jim is with me, as well as James on Senior Leadership Team and Florida. So the full team is here to answer any questions you have, and I'm the spokesperson, but this was completely a group effort.
So we are going to approve this agenda we have before us?
Yes, if you will approve the agenda before you, based on that roadmap.
So move, Madam Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Nunnally, seconded by Commissioner Holloman. Let's vote. To accept the agenda as we have it before us. Eight out of nine, all here, voted positive. Madam Clerk, Madam Manager, you have the vote.
Okay, so let me tell you the documents that you have in front of you right now. In front of you, you have the agenda that you just approved, followed by a list of projects that the board has advised me that you may wish to consider for funding. Those may be projects initiated by individual board members or those requested by the community. Behind that, you have a money chart, and then at the request of Commissioner Nunnally, you have the minutes and all of the community survey responses that were collected in 21 and 22, followed by the most recent letter from Farmville Fire. You previously received correspondence from Fountain Fire and Simpson Fire, as well as residents from Lake Glenwood, and that's not repeated in your packet today. So those are the documents that are in front of you. And we're going to take a few minutes now to focus on that money sheet, which is the sheet right behind your project list, and it has multiple colors on it. And I have the first block of that money sheet up on your screen. Yep, that's the sheet. Okay, and what that tells you is this is your current allocations of American Rescue Plan funds. And as you can see from what I have here highlighted on your top block, the total amount of money received was $35.1 million. And you place those funds into seven different buckets or eligible funding categories: broadband, community health, employee health and safety, housing and homelessness, business and employment assistance, water and sewer infrastructure, and then ARPA administration and other eligible projects. What you have on your sheet shows the column of your first, that yellow column are your first allocations of your $35.1 million into those eligible buckets. The next column in red reflects the money that you have either spent or obligated under contract. So that's money that you've already spoken for. The next column, which looks kind of a peach color, I'm going to call it orange, but you might call it pink or peach, that's the money that you have promised that you will spend, but the contract is pending. So you've already taken official board action to say, we are going to spend this money this way, but it hasn't yet been spent or put under contract, but it's been promised. And then the green column is what's available, remaining to be spent. And that total is $2,188,684.63. That's the amount that's available after what you have already actually spent, put under contract, and promised to other people. And if you go down that chart, here's your whole chart, it breaks down each of those broader buckets into the exact expenditures, so you can see what they are, how each bucket's broken down, what you've obligated, and how we arrive at that available number. Any questions so far? Are you following me?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so let's go for, let's jump right to that broadband, which is your first block. And I'm going to kind of show you how this chart works so you understand it, and I'm also going to do at the same time an update on broadband. You set aside $8 million, that's in your yellow allocation column of that bottom line, to spend towards broadband. And that was really the result of what you have in front of you, those community input sessions. The top two priorities on your community input sessions back in 21 and 22 were broadband and recreation. And that's in front of you to refresh your memory. So you put $8 million towards broadband. We applied for Great Grant I, and we were, Bright Speed was awarded that grant. We thought that was going to cost us $3.95 million as our contribution. In fact, when the contract came through, it only cost us $2.6 million. And that's where that $1.3 million of available funds comes from, the delta between what you had set aside for that contract and what we actually went under contract for. As a reminder, Bright Speed will serve approximately 2,700 unserved locations throughout Pitt County with high-speed in-the-ground fiber broadband. That contract has already been signed, Bright Speed will complete that work, and they have already submitted their first progress report to the state, which shows that they're still in that design phase. So you haven't seen anything on the ground yet, but it's moving forward, supervised by the state.
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, I'm not sure when it's going to be proper for this, but when you talk about the pending obligation and whatever we had said, we voted on this some time ago, a couple months ago. And I voted in favor of it, and the majority did, I believe that there was one that did not. Being in a majority then, I would like to make a motion that we rescind that obligation so that we can reconsider any or all of these other monies that...
Commissioner Coulson, I want to understand what you're saying.
Well, when we voted for it, that's when we say that we're obligated to pay these monies, right?
For broadband, yes. Is that right?
I'm asking, Janice.
Mr. Finance?
So when you voted for it, it becomes a pending obligation. When it's under contract, it's a true obligation. So there are certain different phases within each one.
About six weeks ago, we were going to not accept any more monies under that obligation. Did we hold to that?
Correct, yes. There have been no changes to this chart since your last...
Is there any reason why we can't? If they haven't spent it, is there any reason why we can't unobligate ourselves for it?
So I think you would need to look at that, I would recommend, the answer to your question is no, but what I would suggest to you is that you look at that individually. So for example, what I want to share about broadband is you have a pending obligation on a CAB grant for $4 million. If you unpromise that money to broadband, you have the potential to lose about 5,700 more homes, more than double that we're serving by Great Grant I and Great Grant II. And so while that is not under contract, I'm in continuing conversation with the Broadband Infrastructure Office, and for broadband, for example, you are under contract with Bright Speed, you are almost under contract with Spectrum, your Great Grant II. And as soon as that's under contract, we have multiple providers who are willing to respond to the state's RFP to do the CAB grant, which we knew was coming, and that will cost you about $4 million. If you, and you can, but if you unobligate or take from that pending obligation column the money that was promised to CAB, you can do that, but then you won't pursue it on CAB.
But if I were to make that motion, and it were to pass, we could re-obligate that and that specific thing, let me pull one out for you, almost a million and a half, $1,487,000 premium pay. It's under Employee Health and Safety.
That's not premium pay, that's actually the column above it. That's the Courthouse Improvement Project that you're going to hear about tonight that the bids came in.
Well, it says 1.487 for premium pay.
Under your red, which means you've spent it. And that was in the beginning of COVID, the county awarded every county employee a premium pay. So if it's red, it's already spent, it's no longer available. The green is available. The column that I think you're focused on, Commissioner Coulson, is that second column next to the green. Those are the things that you have promised but have not formally put under contract or spent.
The pending obligation column.
The pending obligation column.
And so the pending obligation column, we really have $20,588,000 to play with, correct? But if we don't rescind or reconsider the original vote, then we can't, then this is a mute meeting, is it not?
It's a mute meeting for anything other than what's in the green column. Does that make sense? Does that answer your question? If you are wanting to move things from that second peach-colored, orange column to make it available into the green column, then you will have to change a prior action of the board.
Which is reconsidered.
Which is reconsidered.
Which I have motioned for.
Yes.
Well, now, if you made that a real motion, I haven't heard a second.
Well, we've been talking about it too. There's nothing that says we have to hear a second before we finish talking about it.
Okay.
Is there currently a motion on the floor?
Yes, I'll make that as a motion. I make the motion that we reconsider. I was one of those that was in the majority, and as such, I want to exercise my right to be able to ask the board to reconsider it.
You do need a second.
Well, I know that, Mary.
Okay.
To reconsider what? I apologize.
The orig, the, what, everything that we're talking about tonight, that's in, in the, I'm going to call it the peach colored column, is that money is not spent. It's not, it's, it's been authorized by, a couple of months ago, when we voted to go with what the county management put into the buckets. That's where the monies came from, to put into the buckets, and we agreed with it. I don't know exactly how to rephrase it, can you help me with that, where it makes sense?
So Commissioner Coulson, you'll need to state your motion in a fashion that's clear so that everyone can understand exactly.
Janice, can you help me with that, so it'll be clear?
Yeah, if I'm understanding what you're requesting, it is to reconsider the dollars allocated in the pending obligation column from the last meeting.
That's when we...
So that's how I'm understanding you. That would not, that impacts housing and homelessness and infrastructure. That does not impact broadband because broadband was before. If you want to take everything in that peach column, then the motion would be to reconsider everything in the pending obligation column to make it available for reallocation.
Okay, then, good motion to reconsider everything in the pending obligation column.
I, um, I haven't heard a second.
What we just got through, you're saying about thirty, I mean, three seconds.
Is there a second on that motion?
Your motion, Commissioner Coulson, is lost.
The motion dies without a second.
We do need broadband.
So then why are we here? That's a rhetorical question, you don't have to answer.
Yes, ma'am.
The $2 million available, I was under the impression, I can't think of the person's name, but the person that was doing the ARPA, didn't she present that we had $6 million available, like, when we started talking about this workshop, or was I zoning out?
So you may have heard some time ago, and the numbers have changed, and said the purpose of this workshop is to be sure everybody is clear on what the actual numbers are. You may have heard there was a number that I heard thrown around, 5.3 million as available under ARPA funds. That would be what's in your green column plus what hadn't been spent in your broadband Right, because you had $8 million in broadband, you spent $2.6 million. Then you have a $5,000 contract on Great Grant II, which left $4,45,000 remaining. If you add that to the half million, if you look under Employee Health and Safety in the green column for unallocated funding, when Commissioner Albright was here, he asked that we set aside half a million dollars if the board wanted to consider in the future hazard pay. And that's that unspent money that's available. We also had a savings on the sheriff's radio system upgrade, and a very small savings on the plumbing fixture replacement project. And that's what tallies up to your green column. If you add the unspent broadband funds, that goes into that higher number.
And do I understand, and I imagine tonight at this meeting, we will hear what some of the costs are associated with our pending obligated projects that, that will reduce that number that we heard. And so what we're really here is hear an update on that from, from how the bids went out, how they came in, and what that number truly is, where it was kind of a projection before, is that correct?
Exactly.
Madam Manager.
The first update on broadband, that Great Grant I is under contract, Great Grant II is almost under contract, and $4 million would leverage about $12 million in additional service to unserved and underserved homes with high-speed internet in the CAB process, which is, will begin as soon as the contract for Great Grant II is signed. Then I'll turn it to Tim, and he can tell you about how the bids came in, on what you have in that peach column for the Courthouse Improvement Project, and above it, under Community Health for the twin community centers.
Ma'am?
Yes.
And in addition to what Commissioner Nunnally just said, we're here tonight to also talk about the green, is that correct?
Correct, because once you hear that, you'll find out whether you're in budget or not in budget, and how much, if any, of that green you want to put towards shortfall or put towards the other projects that are on that second page that you all have made me aware of over this course of time. And then this way, the folks who are listening have an understanding of whether or not there's an opportunity for additional ARPA funds or not, right? It's, this workshop is about being transparent with all of what's been spent, what's available, and what you have left to spend. And I think, I think if you accomplish out of this workshop, moving everything over to that pending obligation column, then we move forward with implement spending it and getting it all done on time from a federal reporting perspective.
And the time period that we have?
Everything has to be in that obligated column, that red column, by December 2024. And everything has to be completely spent by December 2026.
Spent by 2026.
Yes, but it has to be in that red column, under contract or spent by December 24. So a little over a year from now. Which, when you're talking about projects of this magnitude, right, because this board also emphasized its desire to have things that it can look back on and know, this building was funded with Rescue Plan funds, this portion of the courthouse was funded with Rescue Plan funds, things that you can look at 30 or 40 or 50 years from now.
Okay.
So that's what I have for you on the status of existing funding, to make sure you understood that chart, and the update on broadband. With that, I'll turn it over to Tim Corley, who will talk to you about the pending bids that have come in.
All right, good evening, everyone. Everyone's doing good this afternoon, this evening. So we do have updates on the projects that we've had up for bid. We've been very busy in the engineering department putting out bids, and we've got some numbers, some more numbers to hopefully clarify where we are with these projects. So I'll get started here. The first project that we bid out was the courthouse renovation. If you recall, that is the renovation of the Register of Deeds space, where Lisa Nichols and her folks were upstairs on the first floor. We're not touching the basement, this will just be renovation of that space for small claims and magistrate, as well as the addition of the Sixth District Court Room. We've met with those folks, and they're very excited about getting a Sixth District Court Room. You'll see kind of the plan there, I know it's difficult, but I wanted to remind folks of what we're doing in this project. So this project was bid out, our initial project budget within the Rescue Plan dollars was $1.6 million. We had three bidders that bid on the project, we were very excited, we had three bidders, we have to have three to open them the first time, so there was no delays, we were able to open them the first day. The low bidder on that project was Hudson Brothers, a Pitt County firm, at $1.2 million. When you add in the other fees, architecture fees, and the contingencies, the total construction cost is anticipated to be $1.542 million, and we think we can get the entire project done under that $1.6 million budget. So that's the first project, that'll come tonight, the meeting this evening for consideration, unless you decide to do something different at this, this workshop. The next project that was bid was the Pitt County Office Park Community Center. So we strategically bid these projects so that, a week apart, so that the bidders on the project would have an opportunity to see the bids and hopefully tighten their numbers up for the second bid. We feel it worked, we feel it may have saved us about a half million dollars on projects doing it in this method, and that was solely because of Hyde Associates, our architect on this project, and his, his thought about that. So the first one we bid was the Office Park. You just recall, this is on the site that was previously going to be Trillium's site there, that they leased off of Government Circle. And this is the site where we had the, the base bid and the alternate bid. So we had the gym and a couple community center areas within the base bid, and then additional community space, office space as well on the side there, which is indicated in the purple. So both buildings on both these projects were bid the same way, same building. Site work was a little different, so you'll notice some pricing differences. Some of that is attributed to the actual site work that has to be done. At Alice Keane, we have to build an actual stormwater pond, whereas at the Office Park, we have an existing pond there right up front that will facilitate all the stormwater needs. So I believe on this project, we had nine bidders. So we had very responsive, we feel we got very good bids on the project, very close bids. J.M. Thompson was the low bidder. The total project cost, that is all, to do the entire project, is $6.95 million. So keep that number, I'll show those numbers here shortly. The next one we bid was Alice Keane Park. Again, same, same project in a sense, you'll notice that this project actually ties into the existing Community Schools and Recreation Building. Again, it shows the additional space there on the right-hand side, if you can envision that area on the right with those other activity room areas being part of the alternate bid. So this is the project I said was a little higher. We do believe it was actually lower than it could have been because of the way that we bid them. Again, Hudson Brothers, a local Pitt County firm, was the low bidder at a total project cost of $7.38 million. So to summarize the dollars, initially, through ARPA, y'all identified $10 million, obligated $10 million out of, out of ARPA to pay for these projects. If we want to do all the projects, so both projects, alternate bid, the whole shebang, it's $14,331,195. So that gives us a shortage there of just over $4 million. What we were suggesting to the board, if they so desire, is to use those remaining ARPA dollars within that unallocated monies, and use that $2 million toward the project, and use fund balance to cover the remaining, to cover that $4 million in shortage. There's other options available also. I mean, if, if the board chose to just do it all out of fund balance and, and use the other $2 million out of ARPA to fund it, but that's just an example of how this project could be fully funded. I wanted to leave with this architect recommendation, this is from Hyde Associates, basically summarizing, basically saying that he feels like these bids, based at a $270 per square foot cost, including all the construction, the site work, everything, $270 is well below the cost that they've seen. And he feels that, you know, if we did decide just to do the base bid, the alternate bids, with, which, the alternate is about a million dollars apiece on each project, that the county would never probably have the opportunity to build, build on to those buildings for that cost. The fact that the contract will be out there, not have mobilization again, those, all those additional costs that may incur will be much more expensive than the million dollars it would cost now to do that alternate. So that's why his recommendation is to do the entire project. So I'll leave with that. If you have any questions about the bidding, I'll be happy to answer them and let you all discuss from here.
Any discussions from the board? We'll start on this end this time, this is all right?
I have no comment.
I'm chair.
Commissioner McGlaughlin.
Tim, where is the Jim Thompson company, where is that located?
I think they're out of Raleigh, they're out of Raleigh, Jim Thompson's out of Raleigh. We had, I would say about, it was about 50/50 as far as bidders, Pitt County firms and out-of-Pitt County firms on, on the two community center projects.
Commissioner Mark Smith?
No comment.
Commissioner White?
They're coming right now.
Commissioner Coulson?
None.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No questions? Mr. Corley? We'll move on.
Already done my update on broadband, so it's now up to board discussion and direction.
All right, let's get, let's get this out of the way. This is discussion for broadband. You started this, so we want to, I want you to clear your head with it. We have a discussion, and we'll come up with directions for the broadband. Item number one. Commissioner Coulson, please.
I have nothing to say. I have nothing to say.
Commissioner Huggins, you all right?
My question is, if we're going to let it stay like it is, like the recommendation, so, then there's no discussion on it?
I, we're here to discuss it, we want to have it clear, we want everybody to be clear-headed about it. If it's all right, just say you're clear with it, and we'll move on. Commissioner White? Yo, what, am I moving too fast?
No, I didn't know if that was a question to me. And the answer to the question is yes. If you move with that recommendation, then the other projects on page two, there's no further funding available.
Okay. Commissioner White, you have a puzzle in your eye.
Well, yeah.
My recommendation was going to be to allocate some money for CTE, Career and Technical Education, to update some shops in the schools and some other things for CTE. But it looks like we, if we fund what we have already obligated ourselves to do and the money is over, it looks like, I guess, we're broke at this point, so.
So, you just, you're happy where it is?
I mean, I.
I mean, I mean, you will accept it.
That's my comment for right now.
Okay. Commissioner McLahorn?
No comment.
Commissioner Smith?
So, just so I'm clear, the 1.3 over in the right, that's available. You're saying is not available if we, if we stay as we are with broadband?
No, it's available. It's not available if you allocate it down towards your community center shortfall.
Well, the only thing that I, I want the board to consider is, and all of these are wonderful projects, but CMSD has some real needs down there, and we were certainly fortunate enough to get, I think, 12 and a half million from the state budget. But that is a, that is a project that is going to impact growth, and I don't just mean residential growth, but it's going to impact business growth from Winterville back to, to Southern Pitt Line. And that's about a $28 million project that cannot be passed on to the taxpayers. And if we don't do something down there, before long, there's going to be a moratorium. And I don't think that Pitt County wants to see Winterville, Aiden, Grifton. I don't, I don't think anybody wants to see that. We want to build houses, and we want businesses to, to come to that area. We've already got a number of businesses that are coming over between Aiden and Grifton. And I know we don't have a lot of money, but I think some money would, every little bit helps, so I would like for us to consider that.
Clarification from Commissioner, Commissioner Nunnely, you want to say something?
Sure, I will.
On this issue?
Well, I'll, I'll say that I'm in favor of keeping our obligations where we have them and, and accepting the recommendation to final out what we've got in the ARPA allocations to finish the community centers and pull from fund balance to make up the difference. And, and I will echo Commissioner Smith's comment. I think there are also a lot of valid, valid things, including the CMSD project, but a number of things that are on, on our agenda, the requests, that we should not, as a board, continue to consider as we push through the end of the year, as our, as our fund balance and ourselves' tax projections come in. I think it's something that we need to be mindful of. I think Commissioner White brings up a good point about some educational things. So, I think while things are good, I think we need to be conservative in our approach, but we also need to be mindful that while we're able to make big hits through the ARPA, we also can continue to make really important hits where we need to, to continue the growth in the county. So, while we maybe close this chapter, to also continue to be mindful about these, these pending projects so we can keep moving things forward.
Commissioner Holloman?
We do have some money that we can do for CTE in different pots, correct?
So, you have just, you have restricted sales tax funds like you used for the Wintergreen School parking arrangement that are exclusively for the use of education. And so, there are other pots of funds to consider, a cap, a one-time capital allocation for education outside of your rescue plan funds.
Okay, thank you.
It's going to come down to pay.
Right. And we can apply for grants for.
Yes.
I'll get up with you, Janice, to talk about that and see if you can make a recommend for work something.
Okay. Wait a minute. Did I, I, did I finish with you, Commissioner Smith?
I think you did.
Okay, all right.
I hope.
I don't want to leave anything puzzling and confusing with clarification. Commissioner Ward?
I'm in favor of moving along.
Okay.
With what we've got.
Oh, thank you. I, I like to say that I'm happy about the, the 12 community centers. That's good for disaster because they will be shelters. The last time, if we had them, school could have opened a little sooner. So, I think we're doing quite wise with, with the centers and, and getting them funded. So, can we get a motion on that? Commissioner?
Yes.
Huggins?
I move that we move forward with what we have planned.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Huggins, second by Commissioner McLahorn. Let's vote.
I'd like to have clarification. Is that only for the 10 million? We just heard that we need another 4.4 in order to be able to do the whole thing. So, is this motion going to be able to cover that additional? And could I ask, Janice, how much do we have in fund balance?
Defer to Sam Kruen for that number. And while he's walking up, I'll say to you as well, the board's stated fund balance goal is 18 to 20%. You have far exceeded that the last several years, and your audited numbers for this year's actual fund balance, which we don't ever really like to totally reveal before you get your final audited numbers, should be ready about November or December. But Sam can tell you, based on current information, what we currently have in unrestricted savings account, right? I guess to understand that your fund balance has a lot of pots within it, many of which are restricted for very particular purposes.
Does it include that 18 to 20%, taking it out?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Our available fund balance is about, not quite, $58 million as of last year, June 30th of 2022. As the manager said, we do expect that to go up again this year.
Is that the amount that's unobligated?
That is.
Unrestricted?
Yes, this is our available fund balance.
So, my point is, questions earlier, there's quite a pot of money out there that could be used to fund a lot of things.
And if I may just say, typically, just as a rule of thumb for this board, you've always assured that you did not fall below your 18 to 20%. You've also assured that fund balance was primarily one-time appropriations and not recurring, because fund balance doesn't recur. You generally use recurring funds to fund recurring expenses and savings account to fund one-time expenses. You just want to make that clear to folks who are listening.
So, going back to my question, is it only, is your motion only for the 10 million? Or is it for the other 4.4 that was mentioned by?
Pull out for the fund balance? You're talking about the Mount Heat State?
My motion is to move forward with what we have. That would include the 1,340, the two buildings. I think that's the question.
So, there would be, with, with the recommend, staff's recommendation and Commissioner Huggins, just to, just to be clear, with the recommendation to, to close out our, our available ARPA allocations and pull from fund balance to make up the difference to complete the community centers? That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Yeah, because the bids were so low.
Brian, is that clear to you?
That is clear. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second.
Let's vote. unanimous, Madam Clerk. Next item.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Did you say what? Did you say motion to what? Adjourn. Are we finished?
You're finished with your 4:00 p.m. workshop retreats on ARPA, and then you will.
You look shocked, Madam Chair.
And then you will reconvene at 6:00 p.m. for your regular meeting.
I, I must thank this board. A motion to adjourn is undebatable. Do we get a second? Thank you. Second by Commissioner Holloman, Madam, Madam Clerk. We're voting now.